March 3rd, Jackson County Commission Work Session to Order. I have a roll call. District 1, Mr. Guffey.
Present.
District 2, Mr. Bimble.
Present.
District 4, Mr. Miller.
Present.
And District 4, Mr. Rabel.
Present.
The Forum is present. Have our implications by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Bennett. First item is approval of the agenda for our meeting. We have eleven items on the agenda this evening. Are there any changes before we proceed? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with these eleven items? Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All of you, if you'd like to say aye.
Aye.
We'll post it. Okay. We've had three individuals sign up to speak this evening. Ed Bain, Linda Smith, and James Shelton are all three of these in regard to the County Road 61. That's what's written here. Okay. So, if you would like, we'll discuss that or allow you to speak when we come to the discussion portion. Is that okay? Okay. So, then we will move on. No one else has signed up to speak regarding the other items. So, we'll move on to our discussion items. And the first item is Mr. Barnes regarding the vote. Please go to the bar.
We have our speakers, the individuals. They know that we've written the votes at County Park. We have pontoon votes and kayaks that they would like to rent out of the county park. Use that building that used to be in the high red car that connects with the patio out there. Any upgrades that they would do to anything down at the park, the state of the park. And I think it would be a win-win situation. But we also would get the gas sale off of the rental boat when they come back. We're gonna have all new pontoon boats fishing in. They'll fish in, cruise in, boat altogether, and then kayaks.
How many boats do they plan to have?
They're gonna start at four right now. Probably about eight kayaks. And have anything that's related to fishing, like fishing poles, live bait, hard fish, or bait, that kind of stuff.
Well, these folks aren't in the business or is this a new venture?
It's a new feature for them in this business here. Now, they do have rental vehicles, but it's not.
They've been covered.
Can I say? He's going.
Sorry. They've been covered under air lines?
Oh.
Or is that something? I mean, under air insurance?
Well, he also says he can carry live guilty insurance on the boats and the building. Anything that would occur, that he would have the interest to take that. Live guilty insurance.
Does he have someone to handle the rentals?
Yes, there'll be someone there. I think his average of operations, just off of selling and renting on that kayak, so he doesn't have to have to clean the thing out yet. But, yes, he'll have everybody's. We don't have to do anything.
Where was his office being located?
We know where our office is. A little room that was rented out for, you know, for people to have gathers and stuff. But we rented it out once, actually.
So, he would have the insurance on someone that rented it, but it's not enough to cover the big lot?
Yes. And he's just gonna operate eight months out of the year, from March 15th to November 15th. So, just being eight months out of the year.
He gonna carry certain size equipment or is he gonna do various?
Well, you know, he's just gonna have the basic equipment, like for fishing and things. You know, he'll have ice and maybe a few snacks and things like that, you know, just for anyone who wants to spend all their time on ice. If you come in and want to fish, you don't have fishing rods, then you're gonna have cheap fishing rods and live bait and that kind of stuff.
The, I know this was, been talked about a little bit before. The best way to proceed with this, I guess he's ready to get started on this, right?
Yeah, they said they've got some, they've got new boats being there in town.
Okay. We have some type of agreement between the county and the individual. But is there any way that we could get kind of an outline of this project, what they plan to include, I guess, that answers some of these questions? And if he feels he needs to prepare that agreement, otherwise we can begin preparing that agreement based on that proposal that he gives us.
Okay, so just give it to Mr. Porter then?
I give it myself to Mr. Porter and everybody, so we can all take a look at it.
Just copy of that. Having to get something together and then just email it out to me on there?
Right. We can begin working on the proposal, bring that back to a work session for discussion and go from there. There any other questions at this time?
I have one more. What's the county, what are you thinking of this?
Well, here's the gas sale and plus, will he come up with some kind of figure on what to rent the building for?
So, renting the building and then?
And it'll act for any, any electric that occurs.
And the gas sales would probably get?
And the gas sales would, you know, be extra.
We do this under contract, right? And the best if he can figure his payback on the equipment where we're done contract, you know, at least enough time to take care of the payback on the equipment.
You talking about a long-term contract?
Well, the payback can be two years, three years.
If he has a request.
I don't know if you really know that or not until you get to renting and see how. I thought we might just go year to year until, you know, see how it's going, though, if it goes.
Is this a longer company?
Well, I think, you know, if we're gonna get started on this, it's probably gonna get kind of quick. I was, you know, bumping around as far as, you know, you probably say it's kind of a big thing.
If he can get that to us, we can put that on the next work session and go from there. If he can get that to us this week, we can begin looking at that and working on what an agreement would look like.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't catch, is the park furnished in the slips or what's the building? Where are the boats gonna be parked?
Boats are gonna be parked on the transit slips.
You think he gonna be charged a rental for that?
No. We have no training for boats, so we, you know.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Ashford?
I always contacted by Lee Hamsel, county associates, if you want me to, let you folks know that they're ready now to put this out for the state rent that the county actually is going to be ownership of. One of them is the 325 County Road 3, and Princeton, the other one is 24, 24 out on Hollow City, morning heat, and that's both the Jackson County Park. And I give all of you a copy, a bid package, and I'll, they'll handle all the necessary things as far as getting this going, doing the advertising and so on. This is just like the ones that the school board has, that's under the federal grant that we were awarded. And both of these are on 75, 25 grant. And 20, and Princeton, that one, has had the 25 percent paid by the state emergency league fund, so we only have to pay for 25 percent on one of the heat. So, we can see if there's any problem for just to head on and get this out.
And on the one individual, if we can, that 25 percent, if we can, do some in kind?
In kind, yeah.
Questions or comments on these?
These are just like the ones at the schools, actually, that was a grant in the county's name, the MOU for the financial park, which is cash.
And this is simply the authorization for them to bid it out of the project, so?
Right, right.
Any other questions or comments? All right. No objection placed, this on the agenda for next Monday. Thanks, Mr. President. Okay. Next item regarding County Road 61. Before we have the votes speak on this or any discussion, we have met with, Mr. Bimble and I met with Mr. Guffey up at the school last week to discuss some of the possibilities. And there will be some changes to Thompson Street, which will be necessary. We talked about what those possibilities were, and we do need to get back to Mr. Guffey and the school board to see if they would be willing to participate with that before we can move forward. And then also get with the town of Pesca to see about working with them on this project. So, if you've not taken a look, I just got this shortly ago, but we can take a look at this, or you can take a look at this after the meeting, we can get a copy of it to you. But I present that because I would like to say that, I'd like to hold off on voting on this until we get these details worked out. I have several questions that came out of the public hearing that we had a couple of weeks ago, and some good ideas on making sure that we set this up so that it's the least amount of hindrance and it's the best or the largest benefit. So, with that, we'll, again, we can look at this information and the changes that will need to be made to the area there in order to make it suitable if we do go forward with this closure. So, before we ask again for the speaker for any other questions or comments from the commission regarding that, anything before we proceed with the speaker? Okay. So, we've had three individuals, as I stated. The first, Ed Bain.
I'm just wanting to speak, right, I'm trying to get my head around this, just like y'all are. Personally, I don't really see closing the road, but there's some things that came up that caught me in the discussion up at Pesca at the lunchroom. And I wanted to see if at least some of, some of you had caught some of this. In the approach to 61, coming from the, or off 61, coming from the east, you've got a hill. You come over that hill and down to 61, and I'm gonna say, that Thompson Lane, corner of football field. As I see it, if the road is closed, Thompson Lane, as you said, is gonna have to have some work done on it. I don't know if the base on it is enough to handle, is up to county standard, the width, or the offset from center line. There's also a water line that comes into it. It's gonna probably have to be relocated if the road is wide. The ingress and egress from 61 into Thompson Lane is gonna have to be such that a tractor, trailer, or school bus could make it. When you get to the other end of Thompson Lane, where you have the ingress, egress of 88, it's gonna have to be big enough to make that turn also. The peculiar thing of that street is, you've got that blind curve coming up a hill, and you don't have a whole lot of vision line before you hit that intersection. I see that as a sticky point. If I understand correctly, they want to put a gate at 61 and Thompson and close the 61 off on that end. What I can see happening there is, some kid's gonna come to school, he's running late, he's going down that hill, and he can't stop, and he's gonna go through the gate. The other thing is, when school is starting and school is getting out, you've got an enormous number of people bringing their kids to school, especially, you know, lower grades. And you've got a great number of kids that are driving themselves to school in the high school grade. 88 is going to have the merge of Thompson, or what used to be Thompson. It's going to have the merge in less than three blocks. It's gonna have a merge from the large parking lot at the school, because it's one rate traffic coming from 61 to 88. That's gonna merge, and then a couple of more blocks, you're gonna run that into town center with 58 being your through road, 88 being your crossroad, where there's a stop sign on both sides of it. And plus, you've got Ollie Lane coming into that intersection right there by the town hall. And that's where the emergency vehicles all are, trucks, fire trucks, the ambulance and all that. And I can see an enormous problem. Admittedly, it's only an hour and a half or so in the morning, an hour and a half or so in the afternoon. But with, with that setup, and I was just wondering if the county had done a traffic study to see what kind of merge numbers were getting off of these different feeds into this town center. Also, there's the question, I know the principal has made the statement, we don't have any children walking on County Road 88. We've got a fence there, and the, and the police department has stated that's a 35 mile an hour speed zone. I was raised in Pesca, I went to Pesca, and as long as I can remember, you've always got some kids coming out of the school, getting on 88, and walking up into Pesca. They may not live there, they might be going to the grocery store to get them coke and a bag of chips or something, but they'll walk up there after school is out. That's, that's a concern, because there's no provision for foot traffic, period, unless you walk on the road. With this, with this merge, and I, I don't fully understand how Mr. Guffey's set up to do what it is that he's wanting to accomplish. I don't understand the flow of traffic inside the school area proper. But if I understand right, he's going to have the buses coming through behind the egg building, coming down about, between football field and the lunchroom, behind the egg building, and around and stopping. That's where they're gonna pick up the elementary students. And all the high school students that ride buses are going to have to come across the center parking lot where there's traffic, because that's where he wants the peak, wants the mothers and fathers and grandmothers and grandfathers to come and pick up the kids in the central parking lot, which would be come down 61, swing in, go through, come back out, and go back out 61, going toward Dollar General. You've got cars moving, and now you've got kids walking across this parking lot to get to the buses that are back toward Thompson Lane. At the same time, you've got the front parking lot dumping out onto 88. So, now you've got traffic merging on Thompson going left and right, traffic merging on 88 going left and right, and they're gonna run into the traffic down here from the parking lot. And it just seems to me that there's probably a better way to handle this. Honestly, I'd prefer to see flashing lights with a warning at the top of the hill coming on 61 toward the school, and a warning down on the curve on 88 coming toward the school. And possibly put it, put in speed humps or something that they have to slow down. I don't see the gate being, I understand it's protect the kids. And I know we haven't had one hurt yet, but if we ever had one hurt, that'd be one too many. By the same token, I think you've got more danger of the children getting hurt up in the school grounds with all these cars moving, buses moving, parking lots and everything else than you do out on the road. Admittedly, traffic on that road is sometimes a whole lot faster than it should be. And when I say a whole lot, I'm, Mr. Miller can understand when I say 50 over the speed limit. That's just way too fast, folks. And sometimes it happens. And I want, I want the kids taken care of, but by the same token, I know the city of Pesca right now is, like every other government entity, they're strapped for ready cash. And county's probably in the same shape. And I think if there was a fix that we could come up with cheaper than rebuilding a road and moving the water line, all this kind of stuff, and serve the same purpose, it would be better put. Thank you very much for listening, gentlemen.
Thank you. And if you would, if you are around after the meeting, we have some information, I'd be glad to kind of show you what we're looking at.
Okay.
What we'll be sharing with everybody else as we work towards this.
Can we look at them?
Yeah, once we, once we finish with the meeting. Linda Smith?
After the last meeting, we probably didn't think I have anything else to say, but I have. I would just like to urge every, each and every one of you, as Mr. Bain said, we would all be devastated in Pesca if a child got hurt. But at the meeting, we discussed several and many different ways that we thought that, that could make safety better with the children. And one of those would be to educate those children about the road. I mean, you would think seventh and 12th graders would know that, but, you know, we've all had teenagers, so we know how that is. But our main, our main concern is, as far as I'm concerned, the times and all that stuff, that's not, that's not an issue. I've talked to a lot of people in Pesca, the times and stuff is not an issue. There, one of the main things that's their issue was the safe, the emergency vehicles and different things. But we, I went home that night after that meeting and since then, and I've, I have made him out at the house about what Mr. Guffey had talked about. And you've got to realize, if you've never been at Pesca, when Pesca is getting out of school, it's already chaos. And we, and I, I and the other people that I'm speaking for, feels like that it's gonna be even worse, because even at Rosalie, when I was teaching at Rosalie, and I asked the teacher, at 2:00, parents start coming lining up, 'cause they want to be the first to get their child out of school. So, when, when he says they're coming off of 58, coming down 61, he wants to put those children inside the center parking lot, or the cars, not the children, but the cars. So, at 2:00, there's gonna be cars starting to come into that school, okay? And they're gonna be lined up, and there's between the high school and what we call Cody Gym, the old gym, but it's Mr. Cody's gym, it's named after Mr. Cody. That's also a parking lot, so it's got a lot of cars in it, too, and like he said. But then, the buses are going to be, here is your high school, and the buses are gonna be over here. They're gonna be on one end of the, of the school campus, and the high school's gonna be on the other. Those high school kids will come out of that high school that ride that bus, and, you know, somebody said, well, there's not a lot of kids that ride the bus at high school, but until they get their license, they're riding the bus. So, they're gonna have to walk all the way across that parking lot. Well, there you've got the parents who are picking up their elementary students, because the high school, those kids who are picked up by their parents, they are, they're on what we call the little, the little one-way street in front of Mr. Moore's house. But, yes, we are very concerned about the safety of the children. We, that's what we want. You know, there is not people up there seven, you know, there's not people up there seven, 24/7 up at the school. I've come there, there, as a matter of fact, since we've had the meeting, I've only been by the school twice. And that was at midnight one night, and there wasn't anybody there, and, you know, you, and I, I know that y'all understand that there is not 24/7 people at that school, just like any other high school. But I, I really want you to think about this, because I think when it started, it was let's, let's close the road. And I don't think anybody that was involved in this process actually sat down and came up with a plan, you know? Because I had asked at the Jackson County Board of Education meeting, I had asked Mr. Guffey what his plan was. And the plan he gave me at the Jackson County Board of Education is not the plan he gave you. And I'm sure he has thought, you know, he had time to think about it. But I'm, I'm not putting it all on Mr. Guffey. I think that, let's close the road for safety, and then they went to the city, and the city sort of, you know, they didn't think a lot, no offense, city, but y'all didn't think a lot about it. I don't think the Board of Education did, 'cause I was at that meeting. Nobody seemed to have a plan. Let's close the road, and then we'll go from there. Or if you have a plan, nobody seems to know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still in favor of closing the road. You know, people talk about inconvenience, you know, it's been said, well, let's put the traffic light up there, the crossroads of the football field. You put caution light up there, and a kid push a button, people won't have to stop, it's gonna take longer, 'cause say, what's the traffic light say, 30 seconds? The time they cross, and another bunch of cars come in, you're gonna have to all the way back up to Thompson Street. Then people's gonna be trying to get through there fast, you know, with the traffic light, same way if you had a railroad bridge, as I was mentioning. If you had that one kid punch a button, another kid not walking out, hit in the head, you know, how dangerous that could be. But like the traffic light, if you, you'd have to corral everybody into one location from the egg department, the old lunchroom, they'd have to come down one location, you'd have to have a fence on or put up. And when you have a football game, that's gonna be an inconvenience, because everybody's scared of after football games, those are gonna never work. So, people won't complain, you'd have to have a fence to make the kids cross. And it's just, I'm gonna use a little sample on my grandkids, say, one time. My mom, you know what that light means? She said, what? Well, green, you go ahead, gray, you stop. But yellow, what does that mean? Go real fast. You know, it's gonna, what makes people, they know it's gonna go yellow, they're gonna speed it up, go through and hit the kid. You know, that's it. People talking about, well, emergency vehicles, emergency vehicles coming out of Pesca is straight on 88. They could go down to Thompson, turn left, and then turn back right. But if you go up 88 and turn on 61, you're gonna have to get over in the southbound lane of 88 to make that turn. Coming out, same way. You know, you're blocking traffic. The other way, you know, it can make, you can make that, all obviously, straight in, or one left turn and one right turn. Talk about a change of address. I've been living in the same place since 1970. My address has changed four times. I've never moved. You know, a change of address don't really mean nothing, but we sure don't want the address to change for a kid. If a kid gets killed or get hurt, whose his address? It's gonna be permanent in some cemetery somewhere. That is what we're talking about, the safety of the kids, the children, the teachers. Not just because it's a little inconvenient for me. You know, I can come 61, but I can go 60, I can come 58, further. I can go all the way down and hit 88, come back in. I'd rather go four or five miles out of the door and keep kids from getting hurt or killed. It's not getting killed, it's just when it's gonna happen. One thing about it, you could put a barricade across that road at Thompson, put some dirt up there, you can close that, it's almost overnight. Then put a sign on the other end, no outlet. You know, that's simple. But all these others that's gonna, that's gonna take months and months. Put traffic light, put crossing wall, put fences up, corraling into a certain area, you gotta corral them back from the football field back in. Now, talk about caution, what's that gonna cost? A bridge, they cross, that's another way you can have corraling, making crosses. But what's gonna happen, like the football game, everybody's trying to get out of that big park, my, they're gonna be on that bridge. That's a strong bridge, let's get that one up to hold that weight. You know, just think about, little simple things without, but the main thing, don't change the address for a kid, it's permanent in the cemetery. Thank you.
The votes have sat up to speak. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I talked to them at the 911 office, and they said, no address will change.
See, it ain't no address, they're not, they're gonna concede anyway.
There was one concern about the address changing.
But that, I just bring that up.
They told us, told me at the 911 office, that the address wouldn't change.
There's not no address, and they don't, they're gonna concede anyway. But what I'm saying, don't change that address for, and if a child would be permanent in the cemetery.
Anything else from the commission?
Mr. Hodges?
Yes.
If the, if there is a, if there is a wall, whatever you wanna call, that is permanently closed, when there are football games and when there are basketball games, there will be only going out, you can't get out that road. So, you, what you're looking at is one way in and one way out at Pesca High School, because that is a one-way lane in front of Mr. Moore's. And so, during football season, you have to go up to 58, you know, the kids that come in, they have to come up from 58 down 68.
in, they have to come up from 58 down 61 to get in that parking lot. So you're looking at one way in and one way out, no matter 24/7.
The way it's been explained, I think there should be two or three access points in and out, and I'll, uh, that's something, I think, you have to, like you said, the planning of this, that's what we're kind of going through the process now, but we'll make sure that that's addressed too, and hopefully.
Okay. Thank you. I would, I'd like, because...
Okay, anything else from the commission? Okay, we'll continue to work on this and, uh, work with, uh, various groups involved and see if we can come up with the final idea and understanding and plan.
So, Mr. Hodges, there, we're gonna...